I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to all. Let us take this call.
Go ahead and call the roll, David.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
We have a quorum this evening. All right, our first item for public participation is the Lauterbach and Amon presentation of the FY 23 audit. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Jennifer Martinson with Lauterbach and Amon, here to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2023. I do want to start by thanking Jennifer and staff for all of their hard work during the audit process. It's about a six-month process from when we have our first meeting to presenting in front of the board this evening, but really, how smooth the process goes, the team is working on it year-round, and we really appreciate all of the efforts and coordination. So, thank you. An audit is required to be completed by state statute by an independent auditor, and really, the goal of the audit is for us, as your auditors, to be able to provide an opinion on the financial statements presented this evening. So, we have done that. We have issued a clean audit opinion. It's an unmodified opinion. It is the highest opinion that we can issue, and it really just means that the financial statements are materially correct, or do in fact accurately represent the financial position of the village. So, really, one of the most important pieces of the presentation this evening, we have a clean audit opinion. I know it's a rather large document in front of you, so I'll try to highlight some of the key areas to focus your attention on. There's three major sections, your introductory section, your financial section, and your statistical section. Within that introductory section, there's really two things there. So, you'll have your transmittal letter on page three, which is a non-financial letter as an introduction to the village, so in management's words, really nice information there just on the village in general. And then also on page 13, you'll have your certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting that the village did receive again for fiscal year 2022. I believe it's almost 20 years that the village has received this prestigious award that speaks very highly to the transparency of the financial statements. So, congratulations. We also are submitting this report, and do anticipate the village will receive the award again for 2023. Within the financial section, probably the most important piece there would be on page 20, and this is management's discussion and analysis, or what we call the M-DNA. And so, really, that's going to have all the information that you need from this report. I know it's 200-plus pages, but it's really going to summarize all of that financial information in narrative form in about 15 pages, so really touch on the key highlights there, and any information that you would need to know would be included there. So, I'd really recommend you spend your time there. Just to touch on some highlights overall, governmental funds did see a decrease of approximately $6 million related to the capital spend-down, with ending fund balance of $26 million, and the general fund specifically, or the village's operating fund, did see an increase or surplus of revenues over expenditures of $115,000, with ending fund balance of $5.4 million. Finally, within that section is your budgetary comparison schedules, which start on page 106, and continue in more detail on page 115. And really, that section, you'll be able to see your revenues and expenditures in more detail in comparison to budget for the year. And then finally, that last section is your statistical section. I see some familiar faces, you've probably heard me say before. I think this is one of the coolest parts of the audit report. So, that's on page 180, towards the back there. And really, for the board, you'll see 10 years of trend information all in one place for fund balances, property taxes, major revenues and expenditures, as well as more detailed information on debt and the village in general. So, really a cool place to spend some time there and see 10 years of information all in one place. Finally, we do have a smaller document that we have issued, that is the management letter. And really, this letter is just our communication to the board for anything that we felt was relevant from the audit process. You'll see the majority of the comments there are related to upcoming GASB, or Governmental Accounting Standards Board, statements. So, I'm not going to go into those in too much detail unless you have specific questions, but we'll work really closely with Jennifer over the next two audit cycles to make sure that any of those that need to get implemented or have a financial impact on the village will get implemented properly, for keeping us very busy here the next few years. And then some updates on prior recommendations there, towards the back. You will see we did implement GASB 87 related to leases, so there's some additional information there in the footnotes for leases this year. And then updates for some funds that were over budget as required communication to the board, and funds with deficit fund balance. Again, just required communication to the board.
Is that memo in this, in the book?
You guys all should have received a small pamphlet like this with your financial statements.
Negative.
No?
I don't have it.
Okay. We will make sure to get that over to you.
And then, of course, if you have any questions from there after you've had a chance to review, I'm happy to help.
Okay.
Additionally, as part of our process, we do also review the internal control environment. We would provide any feedback to the board as well. If there were any difficulties during the audit disagreements with management, I'm happy to say we have nothing to report this evening. So, again, overall, we have the clean audit opinion, that award, again, the certificate for achievement and excellence reporting, and a huge thanks to staff for all of their efforts and coordination. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You, too. Okay. All right, next up on the agenda, we have a resident from Mayfield Drive. Rob? Welcome. Can you just state your name and address for you?
Good evening. I'm Rob Van Hedhoff, 2391 Mayfield Drive, Montgomery. So, thank you, members of the board. As I stated, my name and my address, I'd like to start, I have a quote here, one of my favorite ones, "Integrity is doing the right thing even when no one's looking." So, that's going to be a little bit of a theme here. And another one is the shopping cart theory, which you guys might know about, where it becomes a litmus on whether people do the right thing, either returning the shopping cart with no reward, or not returning it with no punishment. That's kind of the theme of what I'm about to talk about. Mayfield has had this problem for a long time with the amount of traffic passing through, especially through the other neighborhoods, so not our own residents, but through other neighborhoods. We've had meetings in the past, as you're all aware about this, we've had traffic studies, we've talked about partial closures, total closures, speed bumps, and lots of other options. And in the end, it was a partial closure that was installed temporarily with Jersey barriers and signs, which is basically diagonally in front of my house. There are, as you're probably aware, also numerous closed road signs from Orchard and Concord, no outlet signs, and then finally, two very large authorized vehicles only and do not enter signs, allowing the list of vehicles that I have here in the document that was shared with you today. Those are the only authorized vehicles to drive through there. As I wrote here, I can state as a personal witness, as I live right there, that this directive is being violated frequently and constantly. Some days are worse than others. Not only private citizens who drive through there, but delivery vehicles, landscaping, trucks, you name it, they all go through there. They all do not yield those signs. The Montgomery Police Department, they try their best, they're there from time to time, they will hand out tickets, but it is not enough to deter the behavior to get the people to drive through there. Since the closure, most of the law-abiding citizens, so the traffic has gone down, are no longer there. But the traffic that remains are the people who are sometimes even rude, yelling out of their window, hand gestures, they seem to speed up sometimes just in jest, just to fly through there. So, it's definitely an issue. The situation was dangerous before, but the closure, it's become more dangerous now because it's a pinch point, a funnel from both, you know, traffic from both sides now have to go through this little funnel. It's basically like playing chicken. Most people abide, but a lot of people will do three-point turnarounds, unfortunately using my driveway to do so. I don't anticipate, and coming back to my beginning statement, I don't anticipate turning the non-shopping cart returners to shopping cart returners. I also have no desire to return to the previously fully open street which turns into a Grand Prairie. I have some residents here today that agree with me on that, as was stated also in the vote that we had to close it from both sides of the street. The only two solutions that I could come up with to solve this issue are option number one, which would be converting the temporary closure to the planned, as it was planned in the past, the full enclosure, which would be, sorry, the partial enclosure but permanent enclosure, so that would mean curbs, permanent signage. I also wrote here, it would be very important to make sure mapping services are properly informed of the closure, because we've even had people drive through explaining, "I don't have to yield the signs because Google says I'm allowed to drive through here." And then finally, a long shot, but it would be fantastic, instead of the police having to patrol this, to have a camera there and literally give citations, that way preventing people from going through there. I truly believe that just partially closing and leaving the signs as we have it today will not deter people from going through there. The second option, of course, would be complete and permanent road closure. That would be my favorite. It would be the least costly, no cameras, no nothing, just no more traffic through there, no policing it, it's just closed. That's it. We previously had, I believe, the fire department and other entities that were here, a fire department stating that they did not need that through, that they could operate without it. The U.S. Postal Service does a U-turn in front of my house and also on the other side, so they also do not need to go through it. I believe there are a few things left, the police, municipal vehicles, and others that would have to be considered. In finishing out, I wrote a little thing here, "I remember the first Halloween after the closure, when everybody was literally heeding it and staying there, and it was one of the most wonderful things in our neighborhood," because all the kids were crossing the street, and it was just, it was the neighborhood like the one that I thought I had bought into, the one that I wanted to live in. It has slowly regressed, basically people thinking, "No ramifications, so we'll drive through there." So, solving this issue not only will improve this neighborhood, but hopefully also prevent what I'm fearing will be an inevitable issue, which will be a child being struck or some kind of accident happening there. So, I appreciate the opportunity for you letting me to rekindle this issue, and hopefully we can push it forward to some kind of resolution. So, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Rob. I appreciate it. I know that staff is going to be putting together some information and bringing it back to the board at a future meeting, so we can have an ample conversation on it. I know that for the better part of 10 years, this has been an on-and-off-again conversation. I run down Mayfield from my house, and I don't run there every day, but nearly every time that I run through there, I've seen somebody cross through the intersection. We would put a camera there if we were legally allowed to, but I don't believe that we can. But anyway, we can rope this into a conversation for the board at a future meeting, and we will let you know when that is.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there any other public comment to come before the board today? Okay, anything else submitted?
Nothing was submitted.
Perfect. All right, move on. I'll read the consent agenda, and then I'll entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the October 9th Village Board meeting, exec, sorry, executive session minutes of October 9th, accounts payable through October 23rd, and then the refuse report for September of '23.
So, second.
Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Okay, that carries six to zero. Thank you. All right, item for separate action, the first one, ordinance 2042 granting a special use for a multi-unit dwelling and variations from Section 8 of the village UDO. This is at 160 Sherman Ave. This is second reading. We talked about this at the last meeting, unless staff has anything additional to add. I know we didn't put this on consent because we did have some absences. Staff or board have any questions?
Just want to confirm one more time that no fees or penalties or anything are being waived, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B is a PSA with EEI in the amount of $84,000,066 for coordination of the Waterlink Partners and StanTech for development and preparation of the WIFIA application.
Thank you, President Brody. So, as we continue down the road of transitioning to Lake Michigan water through the DuPage Water Commission, the village has identified WIFIA funding as one of our primary sources for funding for our capital improvement projects that need to take place as part of this transition. The village submitted our LOI to the WIFIA group and was ultimately approved, the application. So, tonight is the PSA with EEI for coordination with our partners in the Waterlink Group, as well as StanTech to develop the WIFIA application moving forward for these multiple projects that we'll be needing to construct over the next several years. So, if there are any questions from the board, I am happy to answer them at this time.
When will we be submitting the WIFIA application? It didn't say that in the...
I don't recall. Pete, do you know what the timeline for the application?
It'll be after first of the year, because until we think we know the route, that will affect our...
Yeah, that makes sense.
It'll affect what we ask for.
Perfect.
Question. Is our submittal coincide with Oswego and Yorkville submittal? Are those independently? Do they have any correlation with the process?
Each community is going to make their own submittal because each of the circumstances is different. They're all asking for different amounts, so, but their, you know, one consistent item is the pipeline from DuPage Water Commission to the region. So, they'll have that common element, but the other elements in their applications will be different.
We are all on a relatively similar timeline.
That was my follow-up.
Yeah, Yorkville has received their invitation, like their acceptance of their LOI. Oswego has not yet received theirs, but we're all on a pretty similar timeframe.
Thank you.
Cool. Any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries six, zero. For what it's worth, Pete and Jeff and I zoomed into the DuPage Water Commission meeting last week, where they were getting a very in-depth presentation on potentially a new route for them to receive water. If they don't get it from Chicago, it's like a $2 or a $3 billion plan to get water from Lake Michigan themselves, with a new pipeline that they're considering. I think it's part of a bigger scheme with their agreement with Chicago, but it was pretty interesting, so.
Did they happen to say if that's going to adjust rates? Is that going to cause us issues in a couple of years?
So, the, so they had a fairly long presentation with two alternatives. One was for a single treatment, water treatment plant that would service just DuPage Water Commission, and they also did an analysis where they brought in two other Jawas as part of the group, but they did rate projections for both alternatives, and using, you know, WIFIA funding, state-rewelling loan funds, and conventional bonds, they were able to demonstrate initially that the rate would be slightly below what the city of Chicago expected rate was, based on a certain, you know, assumption of rating, 3% increase in rate. There's more to follow, because the city of Joliet and the cities that make up the Grand Prairie Water Commission had negotiated a, what's called a cost-to-service agreement with the city of Chicago, which basically sets the cost of water based on the amount of the facility that you utilize, so it's not arbitrary. And so, but DuPage Water Commission gets their water from a different water treatment plant. So, the Joliet group gets their water from a sort of water treatment plant, the DuPage Water Group gets their water from Jardine Water Plant. So, the costs are going to be slightly different. So, as part of their negotiation with the city of Chicago on a water agreement, they are working to determine what that cost-to-service rate will be. I, you know, we're not privy to their discussions, but I presume that once that is established, they'll rerun the analysis, compare it to that, and then you'd have a final way to determine whether or not it's cost-effective to do this, you know, new treatment plan and intake. So, you know, it's a complex project, as you might expect, and it'll take some time. So, there, one of the things they did agree to at the meeting was to establish a 15- to 20-year extension of their current agreement with the city of Chicago, so they can determine what route to go. So, thank you.
Pretty massive. All right. Next item. C is approval of purchase from Aurora Sign Company for gateway signage for project year one. Christina.
Good evening, village president and village board. Before you tonight is a purchase approval for the village of Montgomery Gateway signage for year one, beginning in fiscal year '22. Money was budgeted in the Montgomery Development Fund for gateway signage at the amount of $30,000 annually for a total of six years, and a total investment of $180,000. The current balance of this fund at the end of fiscal year '23 is just under $1.9 million. Money allocated in fiscal year '22 was not utilized, as the village's brand refresh was not complete until January of '22. In the spring of that year, staff began brainstorming for the village-wide gateway sign program with the hopes to purchase and install the signs in fiscal year '23, but the process of researching and vetting potential vendors took longer than initially planned. We found that vendors handling the size and scope of larger municipal signage plans, such as what we were seeking with monument signs, often require a design firm in advance prior to any quotes. Quotes for advanced work ranged between $8,000 and $10,000, and that was only for the initial design. Staff worked to inquire with local companies, reviewed portfolios, confirmed company's ability to handle the size and scope of our project, and reached out for referrals and recommendations from our community partners. Two vendors required deposits and contracts with the design firm prior to offering costs and quotes. Another company did not have the portfolio of monument signs we had hoped for, and could not promise we would not need additional third-party contractors to complete the project. Therefore, we moved forward with the design phase with Aurora Sign Company at no charge to the village. Staff is happy with the designs that you'll see presented this evening. Aurora Sign Company has a large portfolio, has resources to meet the needs of our project, and comes with high recommendations from the Fox Valley Park District, who utilize them for all of their signage, including the large monument sign located within the village at Stewart Sports Complex. In the boardroom this evening is a map of the general location of the 18 proposed signs and a rendering of design for Phase 1. Additionally, a few of the draft concepts, plans for future phases of this project were additionally included for your review or sneak peek. I'm happy to answer any additional questions at this time, and also Director Maluski and Administrator Zoful are available for any questions related to fund allocations.
Thank you. Questions? All right.
I guess just a quick comment. I looked at the sign locations. The only one I would suggest moving is the one at Orchard Road near Galena. I would bring it down all the way further south, almost to the tracks.
I love that you said that with a straight face, too. Sounds perfect. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, Caldwell.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries six, zero. Thank you. Thanks, Christina. All right, item D tonight is Resolution 2023-030, approving an MOU between the village of Montgomery and A&amp;A Conti Joint Venture Limited Partnership. Attorney Julian.
This item is related to an expiring annexation agreement whereby owner was supposed to donate a 1.5-acre parcel to the village. This, the owner has reviewed the documents, and they have them in hand, but nothing has yet been finalized. So, just because the annexation agreement is expiring, we wanted to put an MOU in place just to memorialize each party's intent that this transaction would be completed. So, we have put a deadline now of January 31st of 2024. There have been some changes from the version that was in the packet. These are mostly non-substantive. They just removed references to the prior annexation agreement and development agreement just to make this a standalone agreement to alleviate any confusion going forward, and there was just a couple of things that were moved around, but remained the same. So, I think the only addition was the, actually adding a deadline in there to get it completed. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
When does the annexation agreement expire?
I believe next week, Sonia.
It's October 27th, I believe, is the expiration date.
While this markup does look messy, it's, there's nothing substantive.
Correct. Yeah, the legal description was moved to an exhibit before it was contained in a whereas clause. There's the striking of the references to the development agreement and the annexation agreement were taken out, and then there was a couple of paragraphs that were rearranged, and the wording was slightly changed, but, you know, it pulled from a whereas clause and then put into the, so it looks like there's a lot of changes, but substantively there was not.
And I can appreciate that staff actually kind of pushing this forward towards, at the end of the annexation agreement, because I know, being on the other side of these things, that sometimes people work till deadlines, and the deadline is next week, and so I'm assuming that's what brought the property owner to the table, so we can get this one-and-a-half acres that we need for our receiving station. So, is there, I know there's a bunch of changes there. Is the board comfortable passing the resolution tonight, subject to attorney review? And we'll get a copy of that.
I won't be voting affirmatively on things I'm handed at the start of a meeting. I fully trust that there isn't substantive changes. I assume it is fine. However, I am not comfortable.
That's fair.
And this is, it's one-and-a-half acres. Is it all right at that corner of the intersection that we're annexing in?
It's located adjacent to the village property that's just to the west of the Oswego Fire property, so it is a little bit east of the intersection with Orchard Road, but it would be in line with the other municipal district-owned properties on the north side of Galena.
Okay, so, east of the intersection proper, what physically are we going to see there?
I'll let Pete handle this one.
It'll look like when it's done. Is it all underground, or is there actually a, like, what looks like a pump house, or...
Yeah, the anticipated improvements at the site would be the receiving station for, we'll have one, we'll have two receiving stations for Lake Michigan water. We haven't gotten the final hydraulics from DuPage Water Commission, but generally, what would be, we would expect it'd be a stand pipe, so a cylindrical, you know, elevated-type storage facility, and a pumping station, and a metering station. So, there'll be three buildings, one, the metering station as it comes from DuPage, so that, you know, they can account for their water, then it goes into our pumping station and the reservoir somewhat simultaneously, or either-or. So, there'll be three buildings on the site. We do have some sketches of what it would look, because we did a proof of concept to make sure we had enough space to fit it, so I can get those out, so people can view those.
It all fits on the acre and a half?
Pardon me?
It all fits on the acre and a half?
It does, yeah. And we have one, we have a similar sketch for the location at Ogden, so you could see how that fits. Whether, it's either going to be ground storage tank or a stand pipe, I believe, and then two structures.
More of an industrial feel, or is it kind of like our wellhouses that are in our neighborhoods?
I think given the location, it would be more of an industrial look. I mean, we'd certainly want to be, you know, cognizant of the fire department's building, but I would think we'd want a more industrial set, you know, since it's in an industrial setting.
But the appearance of that, we could approve at a much later date.
Yeah, we're a long way away from that, but, yeah, we'll, like, just like everything, we'll have was discussion on whether we're going to have, you know, brick face or split-face block, or, you know, metal building, whatever you guys want.
And since it's not right on the corner, then it really isn't that. I was envisioning this at the corner of that property, so I'm like, all right, what's this really going to look like in the end, so.
And I did want to add one thing. So, essentially, this is just extending the existing obligation, but the actual transfer of the land will come back. of the land will come back when you accept, um, that parcel. So before anything is closed, that will come back before the board.
Perfect. And you said that deadline is January?
Yes, January thirty-first.
Got it. Okay.
This is Friday.
Okay. Has there been a motion, a second on it?
A motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
I was looking, I was just... All right. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Debbie.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
No.
Five to one. Thank you. All right, moving on, items for discussion. Uh, the only item is the snow and ice plan update for twenty-twenty-three. Hit it.
Thank you, President Rowley. So we'll try and make this sweet. There's not a lot of, uh, changes to the village's existing snow and ice plan, uh, but do like to take this opportunity to go through things, just to remind the board, um, the initiatives and the efforts that go into planning for our winter season for, uh, our public works staff and, um, not only keeping safe roadways, but also safe facilities, uh, throughout the village, uh, for our residents and, uh, those that are visiting our facility. So, um, starting off with the, uh, the mission statement, just want to read out the, uh, couple of quick lines here. Provide safe and accessible passage on village streets for emergency and non-inversion uses res-, uses residential businesses and school traffic. Uh, we also provide safe and accessible pedestrian access to our village-owned buildings, uh, throughout our winter season. So, um, those are kind of our main highlights that we go through, um, utilizing, um, the equipment and, um, resources that we have. So one of the major resources that we have and we utilize on a daily basis, um, not only in the winter months, but, um, other times throughout the year, but specifically in the winter that helped us, uh, be able to, uh, allow for staff preparedness is our, uh, weather forecasting service that we utilize. So, uh, we use this also for pre-event, uh, vehicle inspections, things like pre-loading salt, which is going to be, um, extremely easier to, uh, fulfill and do now that we have a larger facility to accommodate that. Uh, but also, one of the big things is long planning, or planning, excuse me, for long duration events, uh, which is probably one of the most problematic, um, situations that we fall upon in our winter operations, um, due to our staffing size. So, um, having this ability to forecast out and be able to make those preparations ahead of time necessary, um, for us to have the proper staff to accommodate all of the functions of public works, um, is definitely a key item. So kind of continuing to move on and talking about the things that we utilize, obviously our vehicles, um, is one of those. So, um, kind of small and hard to read, which is a good thing, in my opinion, because we have been able to add vehicles and equipment throughout, uh, my time here at the village. So ten years ago, uh, when I first started with the village, we had no, uh, medium duty to light duty pickup trucks equipped with, uh, snow plows. We relied heavily on our, um, larger, uh, heavy duty trucks and vehicles, uh, to perform snow operations. So we've been able to, um, identify a process of tandem plowing, uh, that was incorporated roughly about six or seven years ago. Um, that's, uh, proven to be very beneficial for the village. So, again, just like to point this out, because we do have flexibility and versatility with, uh, current equipment that we have been purchasing over the last several years to be able to, uh, be multifaceted, not for, only for day-to-day operations, but also in our snow and ice control program. So moving on to the next, um, anti-icing and de-icing. Um, so anti-icing, most people are familiar with. It's a process of pre-wetting, uh, when applying our, uh, brine or cocktails to the road, um, ahead of the storms. Uh, so the village has an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Oswego, uh, where we're able to, um, utilize their brine, sophisticated brine-making system that they have housed at their public works department. In trade-off, we, uh, perform application to, uh, a route section in, within the Village of Oswego, uh, as a trade-off. This has proven to be very effective, um, in, in our opinion, throughout the last several years. Um, the village also board approved a second, uh, truck that'll be utilized for, um, this application, which will be having, uh, which will be delivered here next week, so we'll have now the ability for, um, running additional roads, um, not only within the village, but also for, uh, the Village of Oswego. So a huge asset for us. The other process is de-icing, which is not used on a regular basis, um, typically only in events where we deal with hard or heavy snowpack, um, on streets where we're using an aggressive chemical, um, cocktail to go out and break that snowpack and do scraping. So, again, in my time, we've never had to utilize that, um, which is a good thing, and we hope to keep that moving forward, but it is a tool that we do have.
I have a quick question. Did you say that there's a truck arriving next week?
Yes, sir.
Is it the one that we should have had two weeks, two years ago?
It is. It's that one.
I don't know if you're trying to trick me or treat me. I don't know if it's actually going to show up, or?
A little bit of both.
Okay.
All right, so moving on, um, road...
What?
Can we name it Steve?
I think you should bring it over to each trustee's house and show it off.
Yeah, we can do that. We can make that happen. Talking next about our road salt, so something that, um, I've been very passionate about and, and the previous director before me was passionate about and initiating, uh, was a reduction in our usage of salt. Um, continuing to, um, pollute our, our waterways, streams, uh, we have a beautiful natural resource that runs through the village, which is the Fox River, so trying to protect that asset, but also achieving those goals in the mission statement that, uh, we talked about earlier, um, can be very difficult, but it is something that we're passionate about here in the village, um, and we have been pushing for. Um, a couple of factors that go into, when you look at, um, the amount of salt that we have on hand is obviously a mild winter last year, but also, again, that carried over from the year before, um, where, again, we've seen a reduction in the amount of, uh, chlorides that we're using out on our roads. Again, there's preparation that goes into that, that allows us to be able to do that. One of the main key features of that is calibration of all of our trucks. So that's us going through each and every truck every year, recalibrating all of the salters to make sure that our outputs on all of those trucks are consistent. So that way, when we run, which we're, we're running multiple routes, right? We have six residential routes and our primary route, uh, as well as our facilities, but it's giving us that consistency of equal treatment throughout the village. So we're not getting that where one route looks better than another. While that can still happen, though, I like to point out, because of differing factors, which could be in our areas west in the village, we deal with higher winds that don't impact areas on the east side as much, so we deal with a lot more drifting. Um, we can also just deal with variations in the storm itself and how it travels through the village, so, but our goal in calibrating and making sure we're putting all the outputs out on the same truck is one of our key factors for making sure that we're consistent.
I have a question. In an average winter, how many tons of salt does the village go through?
Boy, that is extremely hard to answer, and it, what an average winter is, and I'd have to go back and look at our salt usage. Uh, typically, what we order is about a thousand tons, um, so I would say traditionally we're in that realm, uh, of a thousand ton, tons of usage, but again, there are so many factors that go into that.
Only reason I ask that, I know that the last few winters have been mild, and so I, I see the tonnage that we have, and I know that it would be irresponsible if we didn't order any salt. If we had a bad winter, we, we need salt. At some point, if... Are we running out of salt storage capacity?
Um, we're at max capacity right now with what we have on hand, so obviously a mild winter will propose some issues for us. Uh, my theory and thought is, is having too much salt is a good thing. Um, there are plenty of communities, um, especially some neighboring ones, that struggle with salt storage. Um, we feel that ours is adequate, given normal circumstances. Like I said, last year's mild winter put us, uh, having to, uh, pack things pretty full. Um, so given this year, uh, i- it's hard to say, but again, we're pretty creative on, uh, having opportunities to be able to, uh, cover our piles and be able to store them, um, in other locations, so, um, but, you know, not saying that it couldn't, couldn't be a potential issue, but hard to say at this point. We did reduce the amount of tonnage we put in for order this year. Uh, last year was twelve hundred. We knocked down to eight hundred this year. We'd still have the eighty-twenty option, so we have the ability to take only eighty percent of that order, or as much as twenty percent over that order. So, again, depending on where pricing comes in at, which unfortunately, we have not received yet from CMS, um, but that would dictate, too, depending on when we get in the latter half of the winter season, where we're at with storage, what our unit price is per ton, and deciding whether or not we want to stock up for next year.
Okay, thank you.
I have a clarifying question. So you said we can go twenty down or twenty up?
Correct. Correct. So you take eighty percent of your order is what you have to take as a minimum?
The memo says ten. Ten down, twenty up. That's why I'm just asking to clarify.
I'm sorry, what says?
The memo says...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ten down and twenty up.
Yep, you're correct. Twenty percent.
Okay, it's twenty-twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along. So some of the sta-, challenges that we face, um, that are, um, sl-, starting to get better, one is staffing. Um, so with the new public works facility, uh, we're now able to start ramping up staffing. We do have one additional staff member, um, from last year's snowplow route team, um, so that's an addition that, um, is going to be a great, uh, asset to the village this year. Uh, garbage collection is another major, uh, challenge that we face as residents tend to place their refuse carts out into the roadway, um, so this impacts snow operations greatly, um, on days when we have snowfalls that, uh, align with refuse pickup days. Um, so it's something that we're working on, trying to educate, uh, our residents to try to keep those garbage cans out of the roadways, and also working with our refuse contractor to make sure when those carts are dumped, that they're placed back into the driveway section and out of the roadways. Um, other factors that we deal with are emergency water main break repairs, uh, our water production op-, uh, operations that we're required to do day in and day out, um, and then we also deal with traffic at peak hours of the day, um, being able to get trucks to and from, uh, different areas of the village. So again, as I stated earlier, um, not only do we maintain the village roadways, which is, counts for a hundred and sixty-two lane miles of roadway, uh, we also plow, um, all village-owned facilities, uh, one hundred percent with all public works staff, no outside source, uh, contracting. We have fifteen different facilities, um, that we also maintain for snow and ice, um, so as you can imagine, um, it's pretty, can be pretty intense at times. Always like to show just kind of our general map. You look at, um, our, uh, route setup, um, you can see that our green and our blue routes are substantially larger in size, cover a different area, but we're trying to achieve the same amount of lane miles per route, um, so those can, uh, make things a little bit more difficult in those two areas, as those routes are a little bit more drawn out and spread out, as opposed to some of them on the, uh, west side of the town that are a bit more clustered together. Uh, but either way, uh, we have a great route system set up. Majority of our drivers finish at about the same amount of time, um, so it is a great opportunity for us to kind of move trucks from our far west side back towards the, the public works garage as we finish and assisting others finish their route. Um, it's one of the mentalities that we have, is nobody's left behind, nobody's out on their own, so as guys finish, they always jump into another route to assist other drivers to complete everything. So that way, we're sending all of our staff home, bringing all of our trucks in at the same time, um, so nobody's out there by themselves or, uh, forced to finish something that, um, that may take them quite a bit longer than other drivers, so. So just a couple of examples, uh, of our facility map, so we try to identify areas that, um, we consider to be high priority and lesser priorities. So, again, in most applications, we'd like to go in and clean everything once. Unfortunately, that's not typically how it works, specifically with our police department being open twenty-four hours a day, as our officers are coming going for operations, but also the general public having access to come in, um, and tend to business as needed. Um, so that poses some challenges to public works, having to constantly make loops through, um, our police department, whereas our village hall and our public works facility can ti- typically kind of hold off until we get closer to hours of operation, um, so that's a benefit that we have, but also, again, those are some of the challenges that we face with, um, maintaining our facilities for snow and ice. Um, also want to point out that our new public works facility is, um, an additional facility for us to maintain this year that we haven't had in years past, so that will be an experience for us to, um, go through this year and be able to manage that, uh, to see how much time that, uh, consumes throughout the day. Fortunate part for us is, again, that's something that we can typically save towards the latter end of our, uh, events and, uh, be able to get that cleared afterwards. So public work staffing, again, I mentioned we have one extra employee this year, so we have a total of twenty-three people in all of public works. That includes our, uh, administration staff. Um, we cover different areas such as building maintenance, fleet, forestry, streets, and water and sewer, um, just to give you an idea. Um, this is our updated, uh, route assignment list. This is a guideline, um, that we utilize. It is not set in stone. These drivers do not always get to plow in the same route, while that is our intention, um, is to keep that familiarity with the driver with the route as much as possible. It's always changing, um, due to some of those challenges that we talked about earlier. Um, long-duration events can change our staffing, um, water main breaks can change our staffing, um, so on and so forth. So while we push our guys to be familiar, um, with their route that is specifically assigned to them, we also task them with knowing every route and being proficient, uh, and able to man-, maneuver, uh, the different routes and the different facilities, um, for different events. So the more we keep people in the same routes, the more productive it is for us, but it doesn't always work that way. So, again, those are some of the highlights for our snow and ice operations for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one. Could be two. When we talk about facilities, I don't see fire departments within the village listed. Do we maintain their access egress, or do they handle that themselves?
We do not. So typically, in a situation where we're in a, uh, heavy down, uh, heavy, um, snowfall scenario, we will work with, uh, dispatch and basically utilize our snow, uh, equipment at either fire stations, um, and the police department, so they're able to maneuver. Again, in my time, we haven't hit that scenario, uh, with the village, um, but it is something that we can deploy. Um, we are not responsible for, uh, any of their parking lots or, or egress out of their building, but obviously, once they get on the public streets, that would take effect.
And then how was the relationship with, um, the Merst Farm that we handled the snow removal?
Um, so that is one that has been brought up. We have just historically, um, I believe, had an agreement. That is something that staff actually brought up this year when we reviewed. Um, this is the, um, the agreement, so we want to review that, um, and work with Dixon Merst to make sure that, um, they're covered for snow removal if, in fact, we are not obligated to perform that. Um, so that is something that was on the list, um, that we are working on clarifying this year.
Was that part of the original agreement?
I believe it was, but again, we, it's on my list that, in my office, to pull that document and review it to ensure that, that we do have a written agreement to be providing snow removal. That being said, it, it's typically one pass through, not very time-consuming, um, but I do want to make sure, one of the major key components there is obviously liability, property damage. We want to make sure that we're not, um, on the hook for that, so that is on our list this year. One of the other things, um, that I do want to mention is on our list is updating the snow map that you saw. Again, it's pretty big here on the screen, but when it's detailed out, there are areas that are identified, specifically in the Belmeray subdivision, where, um, we had lesser priority roads, because when this map was originally created, um, we didn't have the development on a lot of those, um, streets, um, so they were placed as a lesser priority. Now that that subdivision is completely built out, we obviously want to, uh, amend the map to make sure that it's, you know, up to date and present.
I have a question. This is for chief. Um, all of our squads are either all-wheel drive or four-wheel drive, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thanks, Mark.
I, I have one other question for the chief.
Mm-hmm.
Do our CSOs have ticketing abilities for vehicles parked in the streets?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, follow-up. You have made the comment, sorry, Matt. Um, you made the comment about the, uh, garbage, the receptacles on garbage days and cleaning and plowing. Do we have ordinance, uh, that they should not be in the streets regardless of the, the season or the time of year? Because I know there are a lot of people that, out of habit, I see them out at the[1742.02] curb line, and is that something that we should not happen?
Yeah, I don't know. It's definitely a good point. We can review that for sure. Again, it would fall under.
Leaf pickup is coming up, and so you're going to have the same obstacle?
Correct. Leaf pickup actually started today, so today was kickoff for leaf season. But yes, you are correct. Obviously, those carts being out in the road can be treacherous really for any, anything or anyone, even people traveling on our roadways. So again, it's something that we encourage our residents to make sure that they're not placing those carts out into the roadway. Makes it very challenging, I know, for, I've witnessed the mail personnel trying to deliver mail when those carts are out in the street. So again, it's definitely an obstacle that more than just public works is faced with.
I'll be interested to hear what you find. I believe I asked that last year, not in public. I don't know if I sent it to Jeff or to Sonia, whoever I sent it to, because that was happening on my street, that a lot of people were putting them out along the curb, and if I'm remembering correctly, that was okay for them to do. So I'll be interested to see what Mark finds.
Good. All right, moving on, newer unfinished? Anybody got anything?
Wednesday is the judging for Halloween, just as a reminder. I know Steve and Doug. 5:30 downstairs.
Morgan and Logan will both, she's got her little posse, so we'll be here at 5:30.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anything else?
Halloween safety event for the police department is Sunday from 10 to 2, I believe. So put that out there to the community. It's always a great event. Our officers donate a lot of time, a lot of businesses donate to put that event on for residents and for the kids, so thank you to the police officers.
All right. I've got one. Go ahead. The King County resident engineer should have provided a schedule.
So the current schedule for Route 30 and Orchard Road improvements, the turn-on for the permanent signal, so the traffic cabinet, or the signal cabinet, excuse me, came in and was installed last Saturday, so they were able to utilize the permanent one, so they're not going to have to do the temporary on top of a temporary. So that's scheduled for November 3rd for the turn-on right now, so they'll go through their testing phase on the 3rd and implement those lights, and then I do not have a schedule yet from them on when they will take down the temporary signals.
Well, once they go to the permanent turn-on, they're now using the lights that are on the new poles?
Correct.
And then they just got to remove the old?
Correct. Once the switchover happens, they will go live unless there's some major malfunction that they'll have to revert back to. But typically, once, once that signal goes live, then it's live from that point moving forward. The only other lingering item that I'm aware of is the reflectors, which they have half-installed. KDOT has a different requirement for reflectors, in-road reflectors that are on the dashlines than IDOT has, so half of those have been installed, the other half are still scheduled to be installed. So those are the lingering items that are remaining.
Will the reflectors that haven't been installed, will they be installed yet this fall?
Yes.
Okay. And the permanent, so right now, they're going through, if they're testing it, are they going to have to time it once it goes permanent?
Chris, do you know what the, I'm not familiar with the process of?
Yeah, so they, they'll do like a generic signal timing based on traffic and the blanks and everything that's out there, and then they'll have a consultant that will count cars, they'll set up cameras, and they'll re-optimize it over the next week to make sure that it's working the right way.
Okay.
But initially, they just put in some generic based on the traffic volume that they have, and then they'll actually go out there and optimize the signal to operate the best way possible.
Okay, thank you. That's it. All right, hearing nothing else, you can see future meetings, next village board meeting, November 13th at 7:00 PM in this room. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn in executive session to discuss the employment of an employee.
So moved.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.